All right, moving on to back number one radio system for the police department. Chief?
All right, well, I just wanted to follow up about the discussion that we started here a couple of months ago about moving to an upgrade of the radio system that the police department is trying to be using. As you know, we talked about it last time, we're looking at moving from the old 800 trunking analog system to a modern P-25 digital radio system. I don't know how much research you got done on that between then and now, but I brought a couple of gentlemen with me today from Teltronic, they're the outfit out of Winchester that we've been working with to design the system. And they'll be able to better explain to you the nuts and bolts of how it all works, what it looks like compared to what we've been using, the pros and cons of all those items. So if you would allow me to introduce Butch Bryant and Jerry Boyd with Teltronic, they're going to let us do this presentation. You guys have any questions before we start with them?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you. Butch?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
This one is PowerPoint.
Joe? Yes, sir. Just a little.
Yes, sir.
Todd, I'm sorry.
That video will be one of the last things we do.
I'll wait until you call it up.
Okay.
Do you have forward and backward there?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Will. First of all, good evening and thanks for giving us a hearing tonight. This is a discussion of a radio system we've been talking with the chief and staff about for a while. It is a discussion, so as questions come up, please ask them. Presentation's about 20 minutes long, no longer than that, but Jerry and I are here for as long as you need us to as far as questions go. Just real quickly, our agenda, we're just going to cover a few important items. What's really critical here is to take a look at what your folks are currently using for the radio system. We've got some coverage mats that can demonstrate that, and then also the improvements with the new system that these guys will see. First of all, we're here representing Motorola Solutions. Almost everyone's heard Motorola. Most people don't realize how dominant they are in public safety communications. You can see there are 36 statewide systems. Virginia has a statewide Motorola system. That's 36 out of 40 in the country are Motorola systems. They've been doing this a long time, 88 years, a lot of work with the federal government and law enforcement and public safety is where they really dominate. We're also here as Teltronic. Teltronic, we are the dealer for Motorola. And we've been working with these guys for a while. We handle the radio system for the county. Been doing the county fire and 911 center for many years, and are currently implementing a new system for the sheriff's department in Warren County. And we've been around for a while too, since 1961. That's older than me. I don't get to say that very often anymore. Became a Motorola dealer in 1990. Before that Motorola sold all the products and dealers were just shops. They worked on radios and installed radios. Beginning in 1990, we became a dealer, been one of the top dealers here in the East Coast for a long time, over 3,000 active customers. Most importantly up there, we have a dedicated engineering team headed up by Jerry Boyd, one of the owners of Teltronic. We have three engineers on staff. So we're the ones that have designed the system you're going to see tonight. And the current radio system. Turn things over to the expert now.
Thank you, Butch. My name is Jerry Boyd, and as Butch mentioned, I run our engineering operation at one of the owners of Teltronic. So I'd like to just speak briefly about the current radio system. And it's based on older analog technology, 800 megahertz frequency band. That in itself is fine, but it does present some problems with providing coverage throughout the entire town. And that is old equipment. It is no longer serviceable and also not scalable, really at end of life, and there's really no practical way to expand that system or upgrade that system to provide coverage throughout the entire town. And so just for current situation and what we're proposing, we've prepared some maps that represent the coverage area where radios will work on the current system and then on the new system. And in this map, the red border is a two mile radius around the town limit. We use that as our design goal. And the areas that are painted in blue are the areas where the current portable radios will work reliably. Not a real big area. Again, that's due to the frequency range that the current system is on, the location of the power sites, and probably some of the condition of age. And the system that we're proposing provides much better coverage. And here the blue painted area represents where we would have coverage for a police officer with a portable radio outside. And that's, you know, close to a worst case scenario. In a building is a little bit more difficult, but we use that as a design goal because that's what the officers really want experience. And we've looked at coverage inside small buildings such as residences, small shopping centers, et cetera. And also very good coverage there, that's also important. The current system provides very poor coverage inside buildings. Mobile radios from police cars, again, the blue painted area here represents the current situation, a lot of areas where there is no coverage. Obviously a lot better than portable radios, but still not covering the entire town. And in our proposed solution, we cover essentially the entire town and most of the area around. And that coverage would actually extend outside of that red area. That's as far as we stay. And these maps are in your handouts, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about them. What we want to do is kind of depict current situation and what we're proposing. So a little bit about our proposed system. We're proposing to use a VHF frequency range, which is the same as Warren County uses. That has some advantages for interoperability, and we'll talk about that. It's a digital radio system using the P-25 standard. P-25, since Project 25, it's a standard for public safety radio, which is developed by APCO Association for Public Safety Communications Officers. Excuse me. And that is an industry standard, a nationwide standard, and it's also a federal standard, not in the sense that you're required to use it, but most grant funding requires that, and that's needed for interoperability with your neighbors. Four channels, four separate channels will be available throughout the county, same coverage for each of them. Our main tower site would be the water treatment plant, and we like that because it's a county or a town owned facility, and High Point provides good coverage throughout the town, so that would be our main site. We would install receivers at the new police station, which will pick up transmissions from handheld radios when they're further away from the water treatment plant. So that improves the coverage for portable radios. And in the dispatch center, there would be three dispatch consoles, Motorola MIP 5000, IP-based dispatch console. So all of these products are public safety grade, designed for this type of application. We would also try to choose things that make sense given the town's needs and your budget requirements, and still maintaining a reliable system that can be expanded in the future if you need to. Butch, would you like to speak to the subscriber?
Sure.
Sure.
First of all, I think we're talking about digital radio. Most people are familiar with radio. It has a little bit of a muffled sound as you get further away from the towers, that gets worse. With digital radio, it's very clear. It's almost like talking on the phone. It's that clear. It also provides you with a higher level of security even if you're not encrypted, because it requires a different type of scanner, so not everybody and his brother can listen for your communication. These also, Apex radios are extremely durable. We're going to go through, we've got a slide that shows you the bank of tests these radios go through momentarily. I think what's really important here, when we look at direct interoperability with Warren County Fire and Sheriff, as soon as that system cuts over, they'll be P-25 VHF. Clark County's P-25 VHF. Frederick County, VHF, P-25. City of Winchester is an 800 system, but they kept their P-25 VHF per fire to use. So if you have interoperability with the city of Winchester on fire, they're VHF as well. That means these guys can take on the radio and turn to the correct channel and talk with those other officers or fire personnel almost immediately. The STAR system, the state system here in Virginia, is VHF. So they give you interoperability with state agencies like state police and fishing games and so forth and so on. Here is just a quick blurb on Project 25. Project 25 has been around since 1989, really didn't matter until 9/11. If you know anything about 9/11, one of the big problems with addressing that was there was no interoperability between those agencies when they had to respond. And so that was a big wake-up call. So from that time forward, P-25 has become very important, which is why all your neighbors now are going to that. Shenandoah County is now getting ready to implement a new system, that'll be P-25. Page County's looking at a system that's P-25. Volker County just went to a system that's P-25, as well as the ones that we've just made. So this is the standard, and you will be meeting that standard. Then here's the specific equipment that we're proposing that people will actually be seeing and using. And here's the dispatch console. Engineers speaks to that better than the salesmen.
Yeah, we're going to each talk about the area that we're best equipped for. So this is the console that would be in front of each of the police dispatchers. And graphic interface, IP, computer-based. This provides the ability to control all four of the channels at the same time. The dispatchers are able, if one dispatcher is using a channel, the other dispatcher is able to see that. It has the ability to interface to a 911 telephone system for shared audio control that's designed for public safety dispatcher. And this is also a scalable product. In our proposal, it has three dispatchers and four radio channels, but it can be expanded up to 48 radio channels and over 100 dispatchers. And so it's an open-ended system, fits your needs now, and will fit any needs that you realistically have anytime in the foreseeable future. Also, designed with no single point of failure. You know, there's no central server or other equipment that, if that fails, would take the entire system down. So it's a very resilient and very serviceable system. And we thought that was an appropriate choice for the dispatch center.
Yeah, on to the radio. So this is a Apex 900, public safety grade radio. Now I'm going to pass this one around. A couple of things about this. First of all, you put up to 512 channels in it, far more than you ever need, but this radio can meet your needs both now and going forward. These radios are a lot more software driven than they used to be, so they last a lot longer. Instead of having to replace your radios every five years or so, software updates and upgrades will handle a lot of that. So they're designed to last a lot longer. Get a lot more bang for your buck from these. One of the features in this radio, under Apex anchor feature, says dual microphone noise reduction. These radios are made so that they've got an algorithm where they pull out the human voice and they suppress extraneous noise in the environment to help your officer stay safer. I'd like to play that video now. This video is going to show, it's going to show an officer talking on a radio while there's gunfire going on. And it's going to show several instances of these where you're going to see what they actually hear on sight and then what they hear on the other side of the radio. If you could open up that file. Another thing with digital radios is typically with radio, it's a one-to-many call. So usually you push the talk button, you talk, anybody who's on that particular channel is going to hear the conversation. Okay. Go ahead and play that. Thank you. Todd, can you expand it?
This is kind of the speakers.
No, no. Can you make it wide screen, full screen?
Command, we've got set fire. Location 123, fire four line.
So you notice you don't hear the gunfire at all?
Command, 101, clear out, both feet deployed. Echo 46, this is Echo 43. We have reached the base checkpoint. We are dismounting and moving on to the next objective. Echo 46, this is Echo 43. We're taking spot armed fire from the north requesting air support. Set fire. Location 123 Main Street.
Thank you, that's it. Appreciate that. So you can see some pretty significant technology in this little radio. Now, as I was saying before, typically with radios, a one-to-many call. With a digital radio, each radio has an ID, also has an alias associated with that. So your team will come up with what each radio is going to be called. When you hit that push to talk button, anybody who receives that call is going to see that alias in that little screen right there, as well as your dispatchers back at the 911 center. So they're going to know who's calling. So particularly if an officer's in trouble, maybe he can't speak, that can be very beneficial because you're going to know who that is. You can also set up different group calls. So maybe you've got a team or a task force that you want them to be on a particular channel, but you don't want everybody to be able to hear that. You can program in those IDs to make a group call that specifically only goes to those officers. You can also make an individual call. So you can pull up an individual ID here and just talk to one person with your radio, just like you do with a phone. Pass that around if you'd like, take a look at it. It's nice and light. That's called the limited keypad version, so it's got a screen and it's got just buttons you can scroll through, but that's how you scroll through, find those different channels, different talk groups. You need to get on interoperability channel with Frederick County or with Warren County, that's where you're going to do that. On the mobile radios, we're proposing two. This is the Apex 1500. And when you look at the next slide, the Apex 4500, they look exactly the same, because they're almost exactly the same with two important differences. Let's start off with 4500 because that's what I have here. This is an Apex 4500, and this is called a remote mount or a trunk mount. And the idea is that the radio and what's called the control head, or the part you actually use to talk with, are separated. So this typically gets mounted in the trunk, hence trunk mount. The reason for this radio is because it can be remote mounted or trunk mounted. And you've got a few vehicles where that isn't necessary. On the vehicles where that's not necessary, which is the vast majority of them, we're going to go with the 1500 because it's less expensive. So the 4500, again, has 512 channels. It's what's called a mid-power radio, which means you have up to 50 watts of power, which is plenty, it's more than you're going to need here. It's got both ADP encryption, which is a Motorola proprietary encryption, a 40-bit encryption, as well as it's capable of AES encryption, which is typically what state police would Both radios come with this control head, and this is called the O2 control head. Motorola has O5, O3, and O9. These radios only come with this particular control head, which of course has your mic connected to it, it's got a nice big full color screen. It's got a button here where you control both the volume and the channel selection. It's also got a built-in speaker, and it's a good speaker, it's good and loud. So what that means is there's not an additional speaker that has to be installed, because police cars get a little bit tight these days, so the less we have to install, the better. The difference between this radio and the 1500, the 1500 is only available as what we call a dash mount, which typically, what that means is these two items are connected, they can't be separated. Used to be those would be installed under a dash. Now typically they get installed in a console, which will be the vast majority of your police cars here, and they'll be installed in the console there. So again, take a look at that, pass it around, get more than welcome to. The other difference with the Apex 1500 is that it is not capable of AES encryption, only ADP encryption. So all three of these radios have ADP encryption. That comes standard in the radios. You don't pay anything extra for that, that's part of it. And that is the encryption that's used in Warren County, in Frederick County, I don't know about Winchester, that's also used in Clark County. So it would be the same encryption that's used everywhere. If you have a situation where you need AES encryption, potentially with some operations, maybe with state police, you can have it in your portable radio as well as in the vehicles that have the 4500. Main thing for ADP encryption, what that means is that if you've got, for instance, a drug task force or something like that, you want to make sure that even if somebody has a P-25 scanner, they can't hear what's going on, it's going to take care of that for you. Any questions on the radios?
Yeah, I have one. I know that this is a Motorola presentation. In 36 counties, what about the rest of the other counties in Virginia? Are they sustainable with any other radio systems? This is whatever they may be, I'm not familiar with radio names, but is Motorola sustainable with another company, say it's XYZ company, would they be sustainable, be able to be operated under the same auspices, under the FCC regulations?
So good question. And that's part of what that P-25 standard was for, so that you could have voice communication with competitors' radios in the same band. And so the answer would be S. So if there's a competitor's radio that's a VHF, these radios can talk. What you don't have would be additional features. So if you decide to implement text messaging, you won't be able to do that. Or if you wanted sometime down the road to implement GPS on the radios, which you could do, but it's standable for that, a competitor's radio wouldn't work in that way. But voice communications will always work.
You mean the FCC doesn't require it to be sustainable, the huge operational system?
Voice communications always is a standard put in by the FCC.
The reason I'm saying that is because, I mean, I know Motorola's a good product, we've met them in the past, but you know, whatever the cost is, it's got to go out to bids. And I just wonder, I'm asking, if a low bid can then, way lower than Motorola, are they compatible with Page and if they don't have a good coordinate set, they're getting it. What about Clark and Frederick and Winchester and all the others?
So as long as you're in the same band, in this case, we're talking about VHF, the answer is yes. I believe Page and Shenandoah are both UHF. But that's where that MIP 5000 console comes into play, because your dispatchers can create a patch between disparate radios. So you can have communication almost every incident. Now, it's not as easy as just changing the channel, but it can certainly be done.
Joe, does this need to go out to bid?
Unless we sole source it. Now, Teltronic, do y'all represent any other radio manufacturers besides Motorola?
We do not. We do not. And one of the advantages for Motorola here is the fact that Motorola handles the radio system for the county. They have technicians here on a regular basis already. Would open you up to those proprietary functions to use between the county and the town from Motorola.
What about the state, the state police, I know that, you know, we have a limit that we got to put it out for bids. We can just offer, say, oh, here's a contract. What is the state police, are they using the Motorola? We can pick it up under a state contract. If the state contract could be Motorola, then we could probably consider piggybacking with them on the purchasing operational portion of this. But if it isn't, we're going to have to, the way I look at it, at the price that I was quoted by our chief, this thing is definitely going to have to go out for bids to other distributors.
So again, a good question. All this equipment is available on state contracts. In fact, there are several of these contracts in Virginia, and state police do operate on a Motorola system. The VHF system, that's the STAR system that we mentioned. So yes, all this is available on contract.
State contracts?
Yes, sir.
Would we get into specifications more so with Motorola than X brand?
Well, if the equipment is covered under state contracts, and the states already went through their due diligence with quotes and everything else, which is always a very, which helps us out tremendously with state contracts.
That's it. I mean, we absolutely need the best of our people out there protecting us. I mean, that's no doubt, but we do have to watch dollars.
So right, yeah, so we're actually talking with Teltronic as the vendor, but actually equipment, correct me if I'm wrong, could be purchased on the state contract, which then comply with.
Yeah, and so understand too that if you decide to go forward with this system, you're actually doing business with Motorola. We act as Motorola's agent on public safety contracts, but your PO would be written to Motorola. The contract you would get to sign would be from Motorola as well. We're what's called a manufacturer's representative at Motorola.
So who would service that, say, risk?
Say, say, Richard, you all, if we get it through the state contract, then who would, who would service our system? Would you guys do it, the Teltronics do it?
No, it would be the Motorola shop in Winchester. There's a Motorola shop on Paper Mill Road in Winchester.
Charlie Crowe's business?
Used to be. Used to be. But they got out of the business a while ago.
Oh, yeah, I knew Charlie for many years.
But in what you have there, you have two, the best experienced top techs, as well as installers in that shop, and they're the ones that service Warren County right now. And have serviced Warren County's Fire 911 Center for many years. Sheriff recently signed a contract with Motorola to implement a radio system for the same reason we're presenting it to you, and that the current system is no longer working well for them.
Where does that say same plan in this decision?
So the, Jerry, you want to?
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's actually a good question, and that's, it's always a challenge in building a new radio system because we need, we need frequencies. Frequencies are our real estate, if you will. And so when we started these discussions, we knew we wanted to be in the VHF frequency range. We didn't know if we'd be able to get four channels that no one else is using that would be available to cover, you know, front row and vicinity. So we have actually already gone through what's called frequency coordination process where ATFO, the organization that sets the P25 standard, researches available frequencies, selects them, and we're in the process of getting those licensed in the town's name right now. So we do have frequencies.
Do you have any idea what the, what the price is of those FCC payment per year?
There's no, there's no recurring cost at all for that. The, the cost to acquire, the town, because you're a government agency, you're exempt from any federal communications commission fees. The cost for getting those licenses is ATFO's fee for frequency coordination, all their engineering work and research to make that happen. That's a one-time upfront expense, and I think that-
Would that be part of a contractual thing? If we put it out for bid, that would be included within that contract?
We've actually, we've actually proceeded with that separately outside this contract on a time material basis, and I think the total cost for that is going to be a little over $2,000. Those frequencies will then be the town's, and they're available reviewed by the system Motorola or anyone else. You know, that's, that's not proprietary, doesn't lock you into anything, you know, with us or any other vendor.
I thought, I remember years ago when I was working in the town, we had to pay a royalty fee every year to the FCC in order to make sure they made our frequencies.
Yeah, not, commercial entities do have to pay a fee. It's every 10 years, and I want to think that it's $60, if I recall correctly, to our new, every 10 years for each license. But again, at this point, all, any government entity is exempt.
Years ago, we had to pay a per item fee to the FCC each year in order to, you know, operate. When we went into the radio system cost, and I went to work here, we didn't have the radio, we got another.
Yeah.
And then when we went through the FCC to get them permitted, then if we had 100 radios, it'd cost us X number of dollars per radio. And so that's not part of the issue today. You just get one fee and that's the other.
No, but some, you know, when, when you, if you purchase service off of a radio system that's operated by someone else, then typically there's a per unit fee in a situation like that. This would be owned by the town, licensed to the town, so there's no recurring FCC costs.
Jerry, if you had something else?
Is this a price quote? I understand it's just a quote. Does that include the installation?
Yes. But that's, that includes everything from start to finish, and you're left with a complete working system. It's implemented, tested, people are trained, and, you know, it's, it's, it's everything.
Any other questions?
Greg? You mentioned where some of the placement of the towers were going to be around the town to improve signal. Would that replace our current comms that are in this building for the police station?
Yeah, this would be all new equipment for the police station. We would not be using anything that exists right now, other than the town known tower.
So where I was getting at with that question is I thought the whole reason we purchased a generator for this building was because of the comm system to keep the police department up and running.
It's actually our connection to the outside world, so we go from here to the police department.
So it's something different.
Captain, there'll be, there'll be a generator at, at the P E.
I got that one.
Right.
This is, but this is the generator for this building.
For this building.
That was supposed to, I thought, one of the reasons was supposed to-
Well, uh, yeah. Well, uh.
Yeah, it is one of the reasons that when we lost electricity to this, we did lose communications. We had no, no phone contact with the outside world as well as internet or any other opability. I don't know if we had still radio communications out in the field when we were down.
Oh, yes, yes, the radio still worked outside.
But we just weren't able to field phone calls.
Telephone calls.
Telephone calls from citizens in emergencies.
So that's, that still stays here?
That still stays here, and that's the resolution for that is the generator.
Okay.
Question, Todd. Will our IP, all that still be run through this building when we're out there?
Yeah.
Well, then the answer is yes.
So, so the, I mean, we have, we have a system here that hands out IP addresses and that type of thing that comes here. We can put a server out at the police department as well if we need to. But the network's a network. It's up or down, and so there's core parts of that network that are housed in this building, so.
Okay.
So this network, this radio system would rely on, instead, yeah, for part of its functionality, would rely on the town's IP network for connectivity between the water treatment plant site and the new police station. And that allows us to use the receivers at the police station to enhance the handheld radio coverage. Obviously, you want to have that connection up and running all the time, but if that fails, you lose a little bit of coverage, but the radio system will keep working, will have almost all of your coverage, particularly for mobile radios. So it's a very resilient system, but we will be riding on the town's network. And again, that may be a factor for, you know, reliability of this building.
Is this a one-for-one replacement of the current system? Meaning for each piece that we need, or like for removing 100 walkie-talkies, we're replacing 100 walkie-talkies? Or is this an addition of equipment that we don't currently have?
Dispatch consoles is one-for-one replacement in the, yeah, talking about your current portable radio.
The subscribers will be, will be the same. They'll be replaced one.
So there's no new additional equipment that we're adding that we don't currently have? We're just replacing old equipment?
Correct, correct. Obviously, we'll have a couple of spares, you know, for the eventuality of one good day. And to be able to provide to other agencies, if we have another agency that comes in to work with us, ABC, or some other agency that doesn't have a compatible radio that does that we perhaps use on, on an operation, but, yeah, partial is going to be just replacing what we're currently.
Okay. And I'm just asking these questions because, mostly because of the sticker cost of this, I'm just wanting to know what our options are with this. But are these the, I understand how this expansion, I understand the need, don't even sell me on that. I was wanting to know, are these like considered the top options or the top features that we're purchasing? Or is there a way to reduce the cost of some of the options without sacrificing the overall quality of the system that we're trying to capture?
Yeah, we've really, we've already kind of gone through that process, and, you know, the, the subscriber radios and the dispatch consoles are, you know, really, Motorola's, I guess what I would call the entry level of public safety profits. When you drop below that, then we, we lose the P25 standard, and we get into proprietary systems, don't talk to other jurisdictions, we'll have any kind of grant funding in the future, and just not build to that standard. Motorola has a series of these Apex series, global radios, and portable radios, that have a lot of additional features, a lot of software capabilities, and we find those are typically used by federal agencies and by large counties, particularly the metro DC area. But they're, you know, they're, they're inappropriate for what you're trying to do here. So the radios that we've proposed are built the same quality, same performance, but they don't have multiband capability, they don't have over 1,000 channels, and so, you know, they're-
So if I were making that really simple, this is the entry level to bring us to the minimum standard that we want to be at?
Correct.
So this, this is the least expensive portable radio in the P25 line. The 1500 is the least expensive in the P25 line and the mobile. The 4500 is just one step up in order to get the, the remote mount capability.
We sharpened our pencils, and we really asked them to try to build something that was scalable to where we could get a good, quality, reliable, interoperable system that we could, could then expand upon. So we pretty much cut most of the bells and whistles off in order to get the project started. And, you know, if, if the need arose later on that we had something that we could expand upon if necessary.
Okay. That sounds great. Last question is, if, if dollars became a concern, is there a way for us to phase this in? You talked earlier about how some of these, some of these are not offerable with going from, I remember you said the 800, 900 standard to a more modern standard. Is there a way to phase it in with it have compatibility with each other until we are completely on the new system?
Yeah, but I, I think, I think a more practical approach to phasing in would be to start with the main site at the water treatment plant and not build the additional receivers at the police station. I don't think that's a good choice, but that's probably the most practical way to do a phased approach. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, a phase could be a lease program.
Well, we'll, and we're going to speak to some of that as, as we get on here. That's a good point.
Lease program means that Motorola owns the equipment.
Yeah.
We're going back, now that we're going back to different number of lease, so if we would acquire, does Motorola allow you to have a contractual, like a five-year contract with them, you repay X number of dollars per year to pay off the balance of the actual initial cost?
Yes.
Do they have a-
Well, that, that would be a lease.
Does, well-
And that, that would be the vehicle that they would use that, but it would be a Motorola lease. They would do that in-house.
But with us, I mean, looking at the cost figures and the money issue to us, but to me, it would make more sense for me to, to consider a budgetary item for next year of, say, 80,000 and whatever, we could get on a deal if you all would be the ones that we acquired from with Motorola to pay you the X number of dollars a year, or X number of years to get it completed table, without putting the burden of $500,000 out of one initial, you know, outlet.
Sure.
In fact, Warren County and many other customers do, do exactly that, for, for that reason.
I would like to, I mean, before, I quite agree, I'd like to see us, see, and that, K O, you may want to look at that, is see what kind, what kind of a system that we would have you and Joe to see how we could operate, could get one of five years, six years, eight years, 10 years, and see what kind of a figure that would give us that we had, would have to place in the budget per year in order to pay for it. So?
Let them go over the financing options, because that'll hopefully circles back around to the top of the conversation. Because we have allocated some money in this year's budget for lease or some type of debt service, so we do have some seed money already in this year's budget.
You'd like to go ahead and finish with your finance.
Well, I think really, at this point, what we would need to do would be to get together some figures. So the, the two ways that these systems are purchased, one is to buy it outright, the other is to lease it. And you, you don't have to lease it through Motorola. We've had, I know a few years ago, we had a county found a better rate through a different vendor, but typically Motorola's rates are, are the best that, that you find, but not always. And there would be no penalty if you went out and searched for your own lease. Nothing would change, it's just the way it gets paid for. So that, those would be the options. One would be to purchase it outright, two would be to lease it through Motorola, three would be to find your own financing, if you could do better than the figures you get from us from Motorola.
Could I ask that we pursue that with, Joe?
Yeah, I, I was under the impression those numbers would have been presented tonight for discussion.
It's hard for us to get those figures now because that figure that you see there has not been finalized. It's not going to be any more than that. Jerry's examining some, some ways to get some savings in there. Not, not a lot, but until he's finished with that, we're not going to have the final price for you. And we, we can't get those figures until we have that.
I think we're looking at 550. Because initially, this, this paperwork went out last week.
You said 450? What did I show?
Good try. Put the gap down.
Let me ask, the, can, as part of the finance options, since it's a half a million dollar capital project, can we also see what that would look like if we financed ourselves, I don't know, through the enterprise funds or something along those lines?
Yeah, well, I'll get with BJ. Once we get some better, once we got some numbers to work with, we'll look at our end as well.
We're, you know, we're pretty close to having the final number. We wanted to have something realistic, not a, not a rough budget estimate, you know, for this presentation tonight. But as Butch mentioned, there's a few details that we're still looking at. You know, we've gone out, we've got bids on some of the equipment at the tower site, which that has to be custom made, you know. I think we might be able to do it better on that, so there's some, some details that we're still working, but, you know, probably in some slight savings, but we're, we're pretty close there to getting the figure you have tonight. This is, is not going to go higher than that.
Let me ask one more question.
Sure.
Now, you say this is a, a system that you feel is capable of handling this. What would be, would it be a large differential between another, a better grade than this one, that would give us a better quality product, and would it be worth the effort to consider this something that would be, would be more advanced and go with the minimum or whatever this system is in regards to where it goes from low to medium to high or whatever? Would it be a big difference between this, this operation and one maybe a little scalable to higher?
Sure. And the, the next step up, actually uses the same radio equipment, same equipment at the tower site, but it adds some computers and software to what we call trunks, where it makes more efficient use of those four channels instead of the channel being designated as, you know, tactical channel designated for dispatch, et cetera. It works like a phone system, and then it shares those channels and assigns one as it's needed. And that, that jump in technology would use everything that you're getting in our proposal, but it would add some additional equipment to it. That's probably about twice the, the expense.
Twice the what?
It's probably about twice the cost.
Oh, twice.
To jump to that.
Million bucks.
And the level of quality is nothing better. The level of features is higher.
I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we buy it from this year and two years from now, we got to upgrade to another system, it's going to cost another 300,000, and three years later, another 300,000.
I would not see you throwing anything away. I wouldn't see you throwing anything away if you were to upgrade, but I'd also be shocked if you found a need to upgrade.
Okay.
Again, we, we've worked very hard to try to, to try to find a system that would be suitable for, for our needs.
For X number of years?
Yes. We, we wanted to, you know, we weren't looking to get something very extravagant, we're, we're looking to find a good, a good system.
One more question. The analog system you presently have, what value is?
We, we don't own it.
Oh, it's leased through another company?
Yeah, we just, we pay for these every month. We don't, we don't, we don't own the-
Well, I, I thought that's what we decided, but I wasn't sure. I was, I was thinking that, you know, because I know we used to do it the same way, and I guess there's still been it.
Well, I guess we own the subscriber equipment, but none of the, the system stuff, we don't own any of that. The tower sites, the-
Any more questions?
Any more questions?
I'll make a comment in the other section.
Mary, just want to let you know, this is a high priority with staff as well. I mean, we are dealing with a system that's outdated and somewhat semi-equipped functional wise, but, so we'll be back as soon as we have numbers for council to consider.
When you're ready to bring it back, it'll be on the agenda. Are we roughing in at the new police department for the combination of this, or?
Oh, yeah, there's a communications room and we did make provisions for an antenna as well at that site. So, yeah, we're making provisions.
I've been in touch with your architect regarding the specifications for that. They've made provisions to mount that equipment on the station.
Sounds good.
I think we had a few more slides, but I think we've probably talked about just about everything at this point.
I think we're in a position to move forward. Joe will take us there and we'll see where, where we go from there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.